It's six to talk and I'm calling this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome everyone. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the Eastview Just a reminder to the audience, whether you are presenting or just commenting on an agenda topic, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the mayor stating your name and address. There is a scheduled time limit. Non-agenda items can be presented unless citizens not on the agenda, but will not be discussed by the council. Above all, please show courtesy and respect at all times. Thank you. We'll move on to a roll call. Please state your name.
Mary Ann Lee May.
Both mine here. Tom, Mary Ann.
Councilmember, Lasnac, absent. Moving on, item number four, approval of consent agenda. Are there any questions from the consent? Hearing them, entertain a motion here, please.
Motion. Fire.
Or later, please.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five. Proclamation here. Regarding the nineteenth Annual Five Seasons Veterans Stand Down. Well, I will read that, please. Whereas Ballard Incorporated, in partnership with Cedar Rapids Metro Area Veterans Council, the Island City Being Medical Center and the Lynn County Continuum of Care, will hold Lynn County's nineteenth annual stand down for homeless and near homeless veterans and non-veterans. And whereas, stand down is a term used in times of war in which exhausted combat units come off the battlefield to rest and recover in a place of safety. And whereas, according to the U.S. Department of Veterans and Affairs, the first stand down was organized in nineteen eighty eight by a group of Vietnam veterans in San Diego. And whereas, today, stand down often refers to a community-based program that assists homeless and near homeless veterans transition to community living by providing access to human service agencies, including benefits counseling, social security and veterans, employment and training assistance, eye exams, screenings, healthcare screenings, housing services, legal assistance, mental health treatment and substance abuse counseling. And whereas, stand downs have been used as an effective tool in reaching out to homeless veterans, nationally reaching more than two hundred thousand veterans and their family members. Now, therefore, I, Joanne, the mayor of Fairfax, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September fourth, twenty twenty five, as the nineteenth annual Five Seasons Stand Down Day. And encourage residents to recognize the positive impacts of this event to assist veterans and to express gratitude to those who have served and continue to serve. Thank you. We're on to number six, we forward. That's a good report. Good stuff. How long and that getting?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Sheriff's Office here to report that for bill seventy-eight hours and nine forty-four calls for service.
Does council have any questions for the deputy? Very nice. Thank you. The department reports are in your packet as well as the engineer's report. Does council have any question about any of those reports? Was that or the engineer? Okay. We have a new couple of new computers and so it looks like my friend to navigate the company that I'm here. So, patients is our. Okay, we'll continue on. No questions, council? We'll move on to item number seven, which is a public hearing regarding an amendment to the multifamily district regulations and fair shots. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And we'll start off with an explanation of what's involved in this particular change. Chris, are you in the vice?
Getting counsel to look to administer. This only changed multifamily, multifamily only. It would allow duplexes to be on a single lot, their own, allow the property owner then to not be part of the homeowner's association with the duplex units. Also, we'd be adding the definition of zero lot to our definition section of the building.
Questions from the council?
Chris, in the one of the pictures, that second picture scan, I think there's a picture of housing one after another after another. There's two, three, four houses. This is just allows just two duplexes only, no more than.
That's kind of house. Use that as examples.
And side, side yard is still standard of any other.
So you, with the duplex, you have the one side that has the zero lot line. There's no setback on one side. That's the common law.
Yeah.
The other side, yeah, the other side can still be required side yard. So eight feet on one side of the property, eight feet on the other.
Zero lot, so.
Okay. So you probably still got one. The only thing we're looking for on this is nothing to do with the, the non-familial housing, residential wisdom.
It's the homeowners associations that's hard to enforce and.
They were all these ones that wanted this. They're having a lot of problems with insurance. Selling their units because of the association issues. They did come to PNC to play in this. This is, this is what came out of those meetings.
Basically, then, if I understand it, it's two houses right next to each other and they work independently rather than exactly our one group community and then they work together.
Well, that's the whole file. Now, the group owns the property. So associations own all that property, all those councils, whether it be four, two, a single one. Every unit within that association, they all own the property together. In this case, each unit could own their own lot.
And square footage of the lot starts to change.
Okay, so none of the bulk requirements should remain.
Any other questions for Chris? There's some information in the packet. It's Tom referred to. The shares. In Z minutes. So this is the public hearing, so I'll open it up to see if anyone in the public have any questions on this proposed change. Cynthia, did we receive any public comments in advance?
I, I got some, a couple came in and they got a copy of the ordinance. We discussed it. I think Chris had at least one inquiry about it.
Uh, yeah, he just wanted to explain.
Right.
Okay, there's no additional public comment. Anyone on the phone that would like to public comment? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then. Thank you. And we'll move on to number eight. Before we talk about the actual ordinance change, councilmember Lasnac, it's not available this evening. Could ask that either this be totally postponed or at the very least just go through the first reading. So that they have an opportunity to ask questions. So I would suggest that the council, like we do this, the first reading tonight. So, and you.
Fair.
Oh, right, sorry.
I didn't know Bruce Shane want to say anything. This would affect, they have five lots. Or I said, I believe right now, that is would directly affect. Do you want to speak about it, Bruce?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
It's all right.
We're setting the heart of nights. We have five remaining lots in our multifamily zone area, which is on the east side of Ridgewood. And this delay would affect the sale of these lots. We have had some interest with them being zero lots. So I just asked the council to consider waiving the three additional or the two additional meetings if possible. We plan to keep everything the same. The duplexes or condos that will be there will look exactly as the existing ones on Ridgewood and Applewood that was in the first division. And we will require through covenants that all, if they, that each neighbor work with each other on all repairs on the exterior, so they all look the same. And we will also make sure that there are some side lots similar to what there is now in the multifamily area. So we keep our additions similar to the way it is now. You will see no exterior difference. I'm going with zero lots in our addition. And we'll cover all of that through our covenants.
If I understand, this is pretty much the trend is to move to what you guys were talking about.
Yeah, due to insurance issues with homeowners associations. Fortunately, this association has a lot of people involved, but we've heard of associations where no one wants to be involved. No one's already running the show. So it's, there are multiple factors. And then also, I heard that when you're in an association, it's harder to refinance some of your units. It's like, I'm not sure, don't quote me on this, but I don't believe they can sell them as easy when they are in an association. Whereas if they're individually owned and individually insured, they can resell those mortgages.
So they can resell them. Well, when they can't resell them, sorry Shane, trade over that a lot. They cannot resell them if fifty percent or more of the association units are rentals, is how that works. And there are rentals up there. So with that being, association, they cannot, the mortgage companies cannot sell that as a secondary mortgage.
Any other questions for me?
My only question was, how does that work twenty years from now when you got repairs need to be done and on the, you know, the side of the house, two different people own a section of the house? One person got fixed their half.
That will be covered in the covenants. According to the attorney that we have, he's, he's been a developer and a real estate attorney for over twenty years. He sees this as the way to go. He's worked with other cities in the community. He said he's had zero lawsuits going this route. He's like, each neighbor, it will be spelled out, we'll work together on any exterior repairs. So the roof will look the same, the siding will look the same. You, you do go through areas, some places where they're different, but our covenants will cover all that.
I'll be honest, this basis four zero, I see no reason to not suspend. I understand Dan's objection, but if it's four zero, it may pose a bit of a problem.
Final comment. You, the developers, enforced the covenant, not the city.
Correct. We enforce them until we no longer own the property and then each resident can enforce the covenants. But these, only these five lots will be in their own set of covenants. It won't affect any other, other additions or the single family lots. These covenants will be strictly for those five remaining lots.
So if they have an issue, they have to sue each other, basically? How long have the covenants, I'm thinking.
Um, we can make them in place as long as we want. I did normally put them in force for twenty years and then they automatically renew unless a certain number vote to change them.
Any other questions, council?
Thank you. Mike, you referenced Dan's questions. Reading his email a little bit ago, I think we kind of answered a lot of his concerns. Change from the density, which is odd, right? That's all, density doesn't, doesn't change. Purpose of the ordinance and talk about that typical use case, potential impact, everything would pretty much be the same. You wouldn't, if I understand, you wouldn't be able to tell which is a zero line line and which isn't because they're all, all the same.
Correct.
So continuing continuity from one to the next is going to be the same. I don't know what else he has. Only duplex, I think, was another one that he had a question on too. So that was answered. Was there anything else in this email that I? Want to make sure.
There was some questions to single family, the fact of that again, it would have no effect on single families, I suppose. I have the email.
So, uh, public hearing has already been closed with additional questions staff here. Well, thank you, Bruce. Thank you. We'll move on to item number eight then, to consider ordinance number one to two, amending the Fairfax zoning code of two thousand seventeen.
Motion.
Second. Roll call please, Tom.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. We'll move on then. Number nine.
No, I wish there were motion to suspend the rules requiring it be voted at a later time.
Say that again, please, Mike.
He wanted to skip to none.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I missed call. Eight B.
Okay, well then in that case, yes, motion to suspend.
Okay. Second. Roll call please.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Then finally, enter motion to final, candidate.
Motion. Second. And I'd say for the reason we know, we answered all of Damon's questions in all of what is concerned for that were, were answered. So.
Roll call please. Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, thank you. We're on now to item number nine. Sixty-eight eleven Boulevard, where's, where is Fennec Street project? We have some resolutions. Here, the first one, Shane, you can talk about all this.
Well, the first one is for the sanitary sewer connection fee, which was discussed, I believe, at the July council meeting. This was just formally added to a resolution. Any questions for that?
And maybe I missed it, but I know there's a reimbursement coming to them, correct? For trees, for trees and these like, is, I didn't see that in there. Is that separate or did I miss that? Because I know there was basically it's twenty-five thousand and then they're getting about six thousand in credit to reduce it to nineteen. Did I miss that?
Yeah, this is just the actual piece of this one. But then in purchase agreement, yeah, there's fifty-six hundred dollars or so for the easements and the free removals.
I think I heard, I don't know, are the owners here, property owners here?
But we did meet with Chris and I know.
And if I understand correctly, there there's a lot of discussion, two meetings and they were confused and there were some people saying we get screwed by the city of Fairfax and Fairfax is coming out way ahead. I think there's documents on here that'll come up, but I want to make sure that I heard the conversation correctly, that they're relieved that it went this way. That it cost them less in the end, if they would have had to go review their whole subject and I, I might have just heard that. Meaning it's, it benefited the, the residents going this route than it did.
I know.
You established a connection fee based on an estimated price of a new subject system. They never did supplies with the bid that they said they had or less than that. So we don't know if they ever had been less than that or not.
Yeah. No, I don't recall any comment that they made saying they're relieved.
Okay.
Chris and I met with them a couple of times.
I heard that.
Make sure they answer.
Gotcha.
Shane, again, this one is this is a bit to the connection fee, correct? Shane?
I'm sorry. Pardon?
Nine A is for the connection fee.
This for the sanitary sewer connection, yes.
Okay, when you, a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, Daniel.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, moving on to nine B. This is the Eastland agreements. Shane?
Yep, this is the resolution approving the permanent temporary construction easement for sanitary sewer on facilities and the construction of sanitary sewer facilities.
Any questions on that for Shane or Chris? Yeah, that one explained in detail with the residence. As to the difference between temporary and permanent.
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, Daniel. Name?
Aye, aye, aye.
Number C, the resolution toward the contractors' project.
Yep. So on this one, we received the quotes, competitive quotes last week. We're doing this project. We received three quotes. With the lowest being Midwest Underground. Can't quite see those numbers up there, but you see they're quite a bit cheaper than the other two. The engineers estimate on the weight, I think in between second and third bid. Midwest Underground was pretty horned, I guess, if you're a kid. They actually have done work for the city. Previously, they did a good job underneath Great Creek, did a good job. So, yeah. Resident council of the Warren Club, the project Midwest Underground. So, second.
Roll call please.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. And finally, a resolution to improve the formal contractors' project.
Yeah, and what this is, is typically when we do a project, they're publicly bidding, all this stuff is considered before we put it off a bid. Project plans, the form contract, engineers estimate, since this is up, competitive quotes, we didn't go through that process and you did a public bidding. So this is a chance for the council to actually look at the contract. It's, it's the same contract. It's giving down a little bit since it's had a poor public bidding, bidding, but it's, it's basically the same contract that we do for all the other city construction projects. So it's just giving you a chance to look at it, see if they have any concern or I guess concerning with that contract, we did assign by Midwest Underground and the city signs.
Any questions? Entertainer motion. So. Roll call please, Tom.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item number ten, updated discussion of Orion Energy's proposed power generation plant information. Council, you have information in your packet. Also, I have a representative here from the airport. And I'm sure Chris will have some information, how council, what order, would you like to hear information? Yeah. Who would you like to hear from first?
I'd like to hear, for Chris.
Uh, just an update. What the lion has presented so far to planning, it's all in the sap. Uh, so far, it's pretty pretty high and they haven't proposed anything specifically. Orion came to a PNC meeting. I'll, I'll be back up. Here to, it asked, Joanne to have staff herself in a meeting. They introduced the idea of possibly citing a power generating station here in Fairfax. We discussed a lot of the zoning that would need to be done. At the time, they let us know that proposals not here yet. At the time, I suggested they come to a PNC meeting. The zoning on this is is difficult, yes. To get this into Fairfax. They did come to PNC meeting. We had councilman there. They presented concept at that meeting. And then at the time, by PNC and council to tour a similar plan in Marshalltown, which we did to lie. Councilman might daily attended that with this one, the mayor, myself, scene keeper of the PNC was at that, drew a Brian, where the ice water, water, wastewater, and then Brian, also referenced the fire department for the plant ice facility. And so that is my update on that far as Fairfax is concerned. There's been a couple meetings with the airport commission. Airport, or commission has asked if this be removed from Fairfax, if the ice, possibly the site, this facility. Not quite sure why yet, because we haven't seen any of the studies that were being posed. And so I guess we need more information at this point for council to make their decision on this, I think. PNC didn't make the recommendation to council to approve the change to the heavy industrial district. I did not bring that to you this month, because I didn't feel like we had enough information on it yet. You will see that next month. They will go back to PNC next week for you. And then you back on council. Any questions for me?
Can you talk about this effort, there is an agreement according to this airport zoning regulations?
You know, those airports, that's chapter, chapter one sixty-seven.
Uh, the Fairfax, oh, yeah.
I believe that is dated nineteen ninety-seven.
Yeah.
That's the last document we can find. The city of Fairfax entered into any kind of agreement with the city of Cedar Rapids as far as airport zoning. We had been digging through, we did find some map. You're aware of those maps we found this afternoon. We don't have a ton of time spent on this, but we're, yeah, we're really, if you guys need more information, we're gonna, I think, need more information before you make a decision on this. I haven't dug into the zoning code a ton yet. I have run it over once. In my opinion, it fits within that current ordinance. Chapter. Section. But again, they have a major proposal, yeah, so we don't have all to beat them as far as that type. Any other questions? So I guess just to be clear, next month, you'll just be looking at changing the heavy industrial zoning district specifically to allow an exception within that district, decide a power generating station. Under the special exceptions of a heavy industrial district, that requires that we go to the board of adjustment for final signing. So the process in this would be, it started with PNC with their recommendation to council to change that industrial district. The second step then would be for you guys to vote on that ordinance change to that district. The next step would be for someone to propose a generating station, city Fairfax, and then apply for rezoning, which the planning is owning with that quota of the rezoning. The next step action, if and when planning and zoning paid that recommendation, you guys would vote on the rezoning to make it happen. If that hurdle was crossed, then the board of adjustment would have to vote, vote on it. So every one of our public boards, public meetings would be utilized in order to cite this facility. Any other question?
Thank you, Chris. Um, we have airport director, Martin Lamp, and I'm just going to say a few words.
Yeah, thank you here. Martin is airport director at C I D. So thank you to the members of the city council to bear with the opportunity to talk about a power plant adjacent to. Adjacent to Traver. Uh, the Cedar Rapids Airport Commission is opposed to the Traver site location. It poses an unnecessary risk to aviation safety. I think you all have received letters in your packet, we've received a number of letters from airport users. Uh, expressing concerns about safety with the power plant at this location. Uh, all of those letters we've received prior to this being, you have, uh, you have in your packet. I wouldn't call your attention with one particular letter, Collins Aerospace. Has spoken that this site poses an unnecessary risk to aviation safety. Um, based on the information Alliance has provided us in regards to the gas-fired power plant. We are imposed, uh, to this location for three primary reasons. One is height, which is probably the easiest one to talk about, um, proposed towers to the stacks, if you will. That would pose the height at up to two hundred and fifty feet, somewhere between a hundred and ninety feet to two hundred and fifty feet. Is what we've been told, two of them, both producing. Um, upward air velocity that will be leaving these stacks will be creating turbulent air above. Swarms, uh, cause aircraft visibility concerns and critical approach and departure corridors. And there will be wounds that, I mean, we all see them around today at other sites. Uh, based on weather conditions, sometimes you see them, sometimes you don't. This particular location, um, and I'll show you a diagram that we just created today. Why that's such a concern, and I'll be happy to share that diagram with you, um. And then you know, or you can have the diagram there broadly. The current Fairfax zoning regulations correctly prohibit the proposed line site location. For safety and public nuisance purposes and reasons. Very important to be aware in this process, the FAA will not be the judge to this process. A lot of people get confused by that, thinking the FAA will ultimately make a decision whether you can put it here or there, that's not their role. So they leave local jurisdictions, local communities to protect the public investment. Our airport through appropriate zoning, so please know, the FAA will not come in and take the decision away from us, so people. Um, the decision rests with us and our local zoning ordinances as drafted. Should the project move forward, it will likely be the end of our region's ability to develop the third runway at C I D. If we do not protect the federal investment, the investment in the airport. The FAA may view the power plant location as a fatal flaw. And not support the construction of this runway through vital FAA grant dollars. That alone erases fifty years of work by past community volunteers serving on the airport commission. As I said before, if we flip the script and the power plant was there today. And we were talking as a region, working collaboratively on this project as site and airport of the exact same size. Uh, that we have today, I can assure you, the FAA would likely tell us. You need to find an alternative site where you're. And I had spoken with former officials of the FAA that shared that opinion. As, which brings me to, if there's an alternative sites for a power plant. In this proposed site, then why are we putting in unnecessary risk and aviation safety? There are alternative sites out there, I have no idea where, it's been brought up by Alliance, there's alternative sites. They've also have said, you know, this is the site we find if you have the utilities board and they're told. So I'm not sure which one is which, but that's what we've been told. So as it stands, we're ready to work collaboratively with whomever to move the project forward, just not at this site. So, as I say, a picture's worth a thousand words, so we just put this together, um, today. So, I'll just walk through it kind of quickly, but this is the proposed power plant site, Traver. Um, this is the final approach for the future third runway. You can see that at the west edge of the Alliance site, it is. Six hundred and forty feet from the critical approach to that future third runway. Six hundred and forty feet. Aircraft approached these, Airbus approached these, hundred and sixty knots. Seven hundred feet and hundred and sixty knots is that way. Little east edge of that site, Alliance site to the, to the edge of the critical airspace, the approach zone. A thousand twenty feet, so I know we're working on additional studies, we talked about that. But this summarizes why we're focused today, we'll get more information. Overall, but. Pretty confident that we stand safe, pretty confident for the ordinance system, we all worked together years ago. To protect the airport investment, to protect the quality of life of Fairfax residents, and the ordinance is do that today. Um, I can tell you, centerline extended to this runway. To the edge of the Traver site, to the power plant site, twenty seven hundred and seventy feet. There's no room for error there, if you crawl, if the plant is at two hundred and fifty foot stack. You know, you get into some math here, but so I'm doing some estimating, site elevation, seven hundred and seventy-five feet, two hundred and fifty foot stack. You had ten hundred, ten, one thousand twenty-five feet, aircraft approaching. Assuming they're on the approach deck, set a fifty to one slope. And you're, you know, when they're on this approach and influence weather, they're getting bounced around and be flown. Sure you feel the benefit planes where you're coming in and approach and you're like. You know, bouncing around and trying to hold the runway centerline, it, that happens all the time. So, imagine that with a thousand feet spare. Going over the top of that site, if aircraft come in and go over the top of that site. They're coming in on the final approach, on a fifty to one approach, and I'll give all this to you. Um, that aircraft at the east edge of Alliance property, uh, would be at a thousand two feet. Again, two hundred and fifty foot stack, ten, that, one thousand twenty-five, twenty-three, twenty-three feet tall. So, uh, again, we, we got studies going, uh, we're still waiting for some information from Alliance to empower some of the work we're doing. Uh, encourage the zoning process, um, to hit the pause button. We've got the zoning in place for a reason, that was to help protect the federal investment, public investment that we have all made in that airport. Uh, this project will, um, impair safety and convert it from our tenants, users. Convert it from one significant tenant, um, that's been in this community aviation for over eighty years. So, uh, that's all I got, but. Continue to work closely with the city of Fairfax as we move through this, but, um, I agree to rate the airport. Airport initially remain opposed to this, so.
So Marty, a few questions that I have is. Um, Cynthia, can you go to that diagram, that math that?
The.
They filed, the colored one, the colored one, we're trying to see. A picture of what you're talking about, just that word, okay, I understand that diagram that you just did within the last day or two.
Just did this today.
Okay, but. That's not really gonna help us multiple people here, but we're trying to see what the impact is. For the airport and Fairfax also to understand, to get all the information from both sides, to make a good decision. On, on how that affects Fairfax and its residents.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so this was a draft back in. Uh, August twenty-second of two thousand twenty-three, the draft. Uh, by looking at it, I don't think it's. Laid out correctly, you pulled out Google Maps, laid up with your current runways. That zone three where it goes up there, it looks like it should bend more to the right, which would be away from Fairfax, but. A question I have is, that's probably the runways that rent that goes all the way up. Concern that I have initially for Fairfax and its residents is, you mentioned an Airbus, I know nothing about planes, but. I think that's a pretty big one, flying over city of Fairfax. And disturbing only eight hundred plus residents outside of that. Um. The other thing I'll mention is, there's many, many, many times at four, five a.m., I hear a plane taking off. Sounds like a, only thing I can come up with at that time of the morning. And it wakes me up, and then I add in this potential runway that we're hearing about. I live right over here, I don't live. Over on that side, right, so. We need a lot of information from you guys to try and help make this big decision here on what Fairfax. Ultimately decides to in this area and. A diagram or something to help guide us, right? Sooner than later, and understand all the people that sent out emails and any questions. You're giving us your opinion, I understand that. We need to see something more than just your thoughts, and I, I get that. But if, if you're complaining for this running, we'll show you something. I gotta believe it's not just on this paper, right? And, and show us exactly where that lines up with this site that we had given here from Alliance and, and, and what it is, and understand also. Option, whatever it is, or runway, okay, what about the noise that it's impact for Fairfax, so it does. You've got to look out for Fairfax too, and our residents on the runway, but we also have to look out for Fairfax and. The benefits of. Whatever the proposal is in front of us, so I know you've been requested, let's see some plans. When can we see that from you, when can we see some diagrams that'll lay out what's your proposal, what's your thoughts are, this? We need to see something so we can help make this, give us more information to make the best decision.
Yeah.
Possible.
Sure, those plans have been in the master planning process for your board for decades.
So when.
And those, yeah, you have more.
This is the current runway, correct?
That is the current, that's our.
So I can assume you sent a letter to the city of Cedar Rapids, demand where the data center was built, you have a copy of that letter? Demand the data center wasn't built, you did that runway?
Do that runway.
I assume you're treating it all, I assume they all send something to Cedar Rapids, demanding that the data center wasn't built, did you do that?
Well, two things, one, uh, your cycle, our plan.
Yeah, I didn't, this is part of it, so answer my question, did you send something to Cedar Rapids?
Two, uh, all copied, all has been treated the same, I hear.
So, no, you did not send the letter to Cedar Rapids, and they, the data center not be built, is that correct?
Uh, I have not sent it, we have sent our opinions to the city Cedar Rapids.
Which was what? Did not have the data center?
Well, the data center that's under that runway is QTS.
QTS and Google, yeah.
Yeah, they don't have stats. And they're closed loop system, that is supposed, but our understanding is that's a closed loop system.
And he can, he can clarify for me, but they're gonna have a cooling tower, is that correct?
That's where Google is.
Google's gonna have a cooling tower, they're gonna have a plume, they're gonna have upward air velocity, they're gonna have heat.
So we have responded the same.
So you told them not to.
We have responded the same with concerns on stabs and upward air velocity.
We've got a copy of that letter. So you get a copy to the city for that?
Sure.
I just find it weird that, um, that runway will be affected less. Than the proposal by Alliance. But I've never seen anything that you go, close the data center and their, which would be more than my understanding is the Alliance. Uh, our plan, their plume would be more, their, and they would regret that, wrong is not. I'm not a fancy engineer, but steam turns twelve degrees, I don't know what the stat could be on. Those plants, if similar, if not within, you know, this, um. Fifty-year plan, which we talked about last work, not once in fifty years has anybody at Fairfax heard anything about this, it's kind of really talk last work. Never include us on it.
Yeah, twenty twenty-two, we had meetings about the current master plan that was just updated and represented as verified as one. Now, as time has gone on, just, you know, we've struggled even with the city Cedar Rapids. And other communities has turned over records, it came, those sorts of names in front of us. Uh, but twenty twenty-two was the latest edition of the master plan, which, um, Fairfax was part of the discussion.
Do you have public additional comments? Who prepared that? Thank you, Beth, well, there's been a lot of talk about removing this proposal, potential proposal for Fairfax, and a lot of talk about overrunning sites. I guess my point being that some of those. Parties asked us to pause our zoning, and like I explained before, the zoning gives quite sense, it is gonna take. All of our boards, all of our citizens, be able to comment on this, to come in and give their opinion on this. They don't want for this to happen, that being said, it's also gonna take a long time to get it done. There's no reason to push the pause on this, there are alternative sites, and some of those could be in Fairfax. So to continue with the zoning, in my mind, is pertinent. Because, just because we continue with the zoning doesn't make this.
I disagree, Chris, I do not want heavy industrial zoning in Fairfax. Well, you're trying to push the heavy industrial zone through PNC. Before we even have a chance to discuss this whole matter, and I don't want to see. I, I don't want to see them going through and doing all those things, if that's not, if that's not the position that we want. That, I mean, that's, that is why that area is light industrial, because we did not want heavy industrial.
Continue.
You sure can, Chris.
Thank you. So, reading response to what I was saying about Marty and push the pause button, I don't think there's any reason to push the pause, pause button on this. Because again, this will come to you next month, as a zoning ordinance, if that were the path, it would have to go back. PNC as a rezoning, and the old time, Alliance Airport can be doing their studies. They can be sending us data. And the city can be looking at this from all perspectives. So. In order for this facility to come to Fairfax, there's a lot to be done. If this may not be the site for it, Alliance may not even propose that site. But if we keep working at it, and they propose an alternative site that's in Fairfax, we will have our zoning going along for it.
Any other questions for Chris or Marty? Good. Thank you, Chris and Marty. Moving on now to item number eleven. Consider resolutions to approve a change order number three and purpose order. For hard truck purchase, cheap tank.
Hello. Questions?
I want to tell us.
Which wants to, what are we on first, uh, resolution? Okay, so we have a change order from, and I'm sure you all received it in your.
In the packet.
Packet, it's, uh. And the change orders for therapy that they're charging for the front. Just so, just so you're aware, when we started this project, I called you, there's like ten thousand dollar. Pension from the bid to accept the change orders, we're still under that number.
Within the resolution, can we change it so it doesn't make it look like fifteen million dollars?
That's exactly what I was just saying.
I wonder why Bernie's been tugging at my. That didn't work.
We got one, two, we had, I'm seeing a desk with zero that's on. All of them, I guess.
Okay.
So that's what the change order is for, the, and the truck community is going to drive to Nebraska. Thursday, Friday, Friday. Uh, to do the free inspection on the chassis, came in, uh, give them the check for the chassis and the. Tariff and a contract for the tariff. Agreement, sort of a change agreement for the tariff. And then hopefully they will move the truck to the front to get the rest of the truck done.
Any questions for the chief on the change order? Any questions for the chief on the change order? Roll call please, Tom.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you.
All right, chief, we're still off. Number twelve, fire station addition project.
We opened the bid for the. Addition on the fire station. Quotes, yeah, quotes. So E I B was below us by quite a margin. So we are presenting that to you for E I B to do the work.
No. Then previously seen and they said that I want that to look like it then, right? Fast move, baby.
Instead of a cubicle.
Thank you, buddy. Accept E I B's very quote.
Second. You roll call from the other side of the.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, next, we need a resolution to approve the hard contract for the project. Any comments on that too?
It all look good.
Second.
Sorry, call me then. Yes, I'm really very much. Well, with the old topics, I.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, I want. For a question, thank God. Have you experienced any tariffs on fireworks?
June, heard you just get worried everywhere for, but.
There's no exaggeration. It's gonna be a lot. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Um, item number thirteen, discussion and possible motion concerning a climate contract. For our city administration, Chris. Also. Approved Chris's. Climate. Any follow ups? Regarding the agreement. We're gonna have that training.
I included that last night for a specific training, uh, management courses.
And I think, uh, since he's gonna be overseeing the people, we should add HR to that. Should have some HR training here.
I think he's on that.
He's gonna be. I know. Uh, he's gonna be overseeing people and that need to deal with those little things that they keep in some HR.
Anyone know for me on that? Uh, I'd like to be able to revisit this ninety days. As far as the contract. I would like to revisit this conversation in ninety days. At least the possibility revisiting this. As an agenda item.
Revisit the, the agreement itself. And you're like, get your ninety day review.
Right.
Cause we currently didn't enter into it. So he would like to talk about that.
Does counsel want for a timeframe on the training requirements?
Where would, a requirement on how soon to be trained?
Oh, oh, has to be completed within, I'm curious time or anything. Uh, cause that'll be. Relevant to like how when he can get training at places, those kinds of things that.
So you find the most recent availability. There's a lot. To grasp. Everything trans transition to city administration. Yeah.
And I guess to that point, outside will be gone. For over two weeks.
I can go to British Department of Vacation, most very fine.
They forgot to put that in there. That agreement that was canceled.
Be aware. You think like six months.
Do you wanna make the motion talking about two things? The one that Chris brought up about. Revisit the possibility of an official contract to ninety days and then the six month on train.
Six months on the train for. HR, if you should slash management.
Is, yeah. So did one of you make that motion?
Me.
Okay. Well, second. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Right.
Congratulations to the end, Chris. Okay. Um. You staying there because you have some more that's not talking about here. Number fourteen. Discussion possible motion concerning easement. Um, for some properties for South Pole.
Yeah, it sounds slow as approached the city. Or. Exclusive easement. Process partial over the city. I'm here to gauge. The interest council of providing this easement. And if you're open to providing it. At what cost? Land fee was suggested. So many quality of fun. But it's. Completely revisiting. Any question that you guys are looking on the easement?
Where's it at?
Yeah, it's over. With basin, Indiana South, already issued here. And. Yeah, we're not getting hurt in the world.
Yeah, but what's the reason for it?
They need additional service behind where we had at that little strip of shops behind the back planet. Yeah, we got a check here. We got a. So the route that it currently feeds off of is run behind Creekside and Ripwood behind that back plot line. Um, with our cable saturated, so we have no more fires. Uh, the deep back there. So we're kind of looking at those other alternatives instead of going back and trying to beef up that cable and tear up a whole bunch of lots. Back there, disturb a bunch of properties. For the homeowners. Um, we're looking at a different path. By the retention base and we got it back there. So it would be less invasive, I guess, is to beat that up. But for. Just a five foot, generally easement is kind of what we're looking for. I did approach maintenance guys, uh, privately on this. They had no issues with it. Doesn't. That didn't all.
Right.
Is it only for South Pole?
Yes, yes.
And that's not the only, it would just be an easement used by anybody.
That's why I suggested it's on some bank. We pay a fee for this. Just the max we made at five foot instead of ten to fifteen foot while we did the south slope. Uh, if we would have went ten or fifteen, we would have probably just made a utility, but. Uh, if you want us to do that, we can jump it up to ten foot, maybe a utility, but. Which I would probably recommend you don't do because then every other utility in the next year can start focusing on through there. This would be explosive, it's awesome.
So the utilities tend to just be behind the, that line of house that you said that it would say digging our houses.
Yeah, there's other utilities in there, right? So I would say no, I'm not, I can't speak for it, but I would say no, our fibers is just, when we built it, we didn't plan enough to. To serve the, those businesses all the way to the west. So our fibers, the column is. Not big enough, so we gotta get another, another fiber down through there. Electric. I'm sure that are probably adequate, I think I. So yeah, we address that, I guess. Um, there's businesses back there that South Pole didn't anticipate that much users in that small of an area. So when that strip all went in. They didn't have enough fiber to provide. Gas, electric, sewer water, those things are already established in those businesses.
I I guess, so what I'm trying to. Draw my, wrap my head around is. I understand South Pole moved into this area. It makes sense, but five foot. But if there's other utilities back there that are gonna have issues somewhere down the road, as long as there won't be, then. They're in front.
Um, there's already easements where they're at, right? They're already done, gas is there. Oh, they got. Nobody else has confirmed to do that.
Everything else have done for that area, right? So there shouldn't be any issue.
Frontside, we're in the back, so. Seems like an overbrainer, I don't, I don't see that.
Well, there was a question. One, there should be any monetary generation associated with this, correct?
Right, exactly. So that's the city's reason. At your discretion. And Chris, can you tell us, Chris, a penny of what?
I have my any suggestions. I can tell you it's roughly seventy feet.
Seventy feet.
They are gonna have to prepare some, uh, final.
We'll have the paper MMS to state it or whatever.
For all that, I don't know. I'm concerned I am thirty or fifty square feet. Unless they're gonna build a two hundred fifty foot town road. Oh, is that too soon?
Sorry. Are you making a motion, Mike?
Yeah. No, that's, that's nobody here. You want to just have a, no.
I think it's based on the next topic, correct?
I, I'm just getting ready to speed.
Appreciate that.
I don't care. Just give it to him.
So that was the motion in a second and all in favor?
Aye, aye.
I'll just remember as we feature. Okay. Number fifty, discussion of possible, possible, considering this non-digital region, right? Concession stand, go.
For Cal Parks and Rec Director, uh, for the last several years, the Sons of the American Legion. And ran the concession scene as Leon Evans Car Cruisin' as a fundraiser. Uh, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Sons. To ask the same thing for this year. The car cruising is, uh, October eleventh, Saturday. And, uh, we'd like to have permission to run that concession scene. Put a copy of the agreement. In your package so that you recall that we have said that rate count would be fifty fifty. And, uh, that's a. They have several. We'll have several.
Counsel.
Any questions?
Motion second.
All right.
A little favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item number sixteen. Resolution to approve, uh, I D O T right away. Utilities. This is going to span.
Yeah, we have two of these. They're all in order. Waiting on, waiting on your approval. One of those coming out of the H R right now, probably you have seen it. There'll be crossing one fifty one here with this permit from Iowa to E O T. I believe that's this one. Any questions?
That's the first one, Chris. Number sixteen.
I believe so.
Any questions? That's been West Underground. Horisaur. Okay.
Second.
Roll call please, Marianne. Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Number seventeen is also, uh, right away. Or I D O T from urban cable.
This one, uh, you actually approved one last month. Uh, the Iowa E O T required them. A bunch of traffic signaling after proposed location, so they moved into location further away from the. Last corner going towards Walford. They're coming out of town by the water shortage plan. They're gonna cross further down by Mikey's, the Mexican plan, our Mexican restaurant. They do the same work, they just moved in because of the requirements and flatters.
Motion second.
Roll call please, Marianne. Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Move on to item number eighteen, discussion possible motion concerning. Eric taking on some additional administrative leaves.
Yes, Chris is in today's group for now. I missed it for a while. Uh, I would really like to bring Eric in. Uh, he has been helping me. Quite a bit in recent months, but I'd like your permission to bring him in at my discretion. Uh, to, to help fill. That building official role until we can find a replacement. This type of building administrator here. But I should say building officially. This, the, the building code does. Spell out building official, not building administrator. Uh, that being said, I obviously, as soon as possible, like counsel to begin the process of filling that. Position, back to my position. In the meantime, I'll be there. Both roles.
Then? How are you? Went, um.
As far as I heard of it, when they looked through the agenda, I think it's an excellent idea. He's been kind of, Eric's been kind of helping Chris. Throughout the rental properties and some other stuff here, everyone he's absent or on vacation, I think he's done a hell of a job. And really haven't had too much training to then. Again. To help in that role, so. He's about to. Better person for it. It will. Won't be the greatest on our part, obviously, we see very helpful on our part too, but I think he would enjoy, I can't speak for Eric, but I think he would enjoy that position. To help do, do more.
I enjoy it all, just so everybody knows. I do, I really do. Yeah, I mean, you know. I can even make that fun.
I can still heck with a job from what I see.
Just on that note, I, you know. All the experience I have throughout. The trades throughout my whole life. Come into play with everything I do every day. Um. I have no problem doing any aspect of. What's asked of me. As far as helping Chris out. Um, it does come easy, uh. Few questions. I'm sure Chris can vouch that pretty much anything he shows me, I get it pretty quickly and move on and it's done. I have double check me. He's tested me. He's like, okay, you're doing this one and I'm gonna catch everything you missed. And, uh.
They're quite good.
Yeah. So it's, it's been, it's been good. And like I said, working for the city has been. Awesome. I'm sure what I done in twenty five years, you gotta be honest with you, so. It's a great environment.
Eric, remind us your license plumber.
Yeah, I'm a.
Or certifications that would apply there?
Um, so. Career wise, I started out framing houses. I got bored of that because I started a house for ninety days. Saw Billy, or the plumbing trade come in and they're in and out of the week. I got into plumbing right away. I've got twenty five years plumbing. I took a journeyman's test. Passed that immediately took my master's test. Uh, had to do the painful wait of two years to be recognized as a master. But during that, I have grown into doing remodels, um. Service work. Light industrial, commercial. All aspects of plumbing, all with project management where I was running multi-million dollar jobs. Every aspect, every meeting you can possibly imagine. Things that can go wrong will go wrong. I am usually diagnosing everything and one thing I'm proud of being resourceful. Um. Don't have to be the smartest man in the room. But we got a lot of people in our staff that I can, including Chris and. Everybody that I work with, I can call any one of these guys. They all have an expertise, so. What I am shy of, we'll find out. And I know my coworkers will easily answer those questions. So.
My experience with Eric has been extremely positive. He's always very patient and offers explanations. In advance of when I need them. And he helps a lot, right? We appreciate him too. Okay, I want you to bring in these guys.
I gotta, I gotta be the lowest paid guy. I put on the hat, I'll tell you. I am. I, I'm telling you, this is. The atmosphere is really so good. I mean. We all laugh every day. I mean, I would be miserable if no one laughed. And this, this happens all the time. And I'm sure there's gonna be highs and lows as far as the business level goes is, is helping Chris out. I have no problem jumping down, helping out. Hey, got your roof fixed. Hey, check in every rainstorm.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I have no problem doing anything and filling in any void. It's just, it's fun. I actually like to go to work every day. Like a lot. Even Joe. I mean, I run into Joe, so that's my. You better hang around like. No, it's just, it's been very, very positive and I would like to do whatever I can to help this town, so. And I do take it serious, um. People's health. People's safety is a huge concern of mine, both on the fire department. Both in health and sanitation. That's something that's been in my life. Uh. Fire hazards, electrical hazards, all this stuff, even in the rental program. This is. Fire hazards, electrical hazards, all this stuff, even in the rental program, this is stuff that I see that's dangerous for human beings, not just the job, it's human beings we're talking about, so. Someone's not feel right, it's not safe, or someone's gonna catch fire, hey. It's all stuff I look for, and like I said, the staff that's here, I think everybody needs to look back and look how stacked it is, because it's pretty amazing. Really is.
Well, council, we just need to, we need to get that, no. Yeah, we just need a motion to allow this to her.
Yeah.
So, if he's going to be assuming different and more responsibilities, do we need to do something to help this thing?
I'd have to see what the salary is now.
And if it was not big, it would be worth looking into for Eric, maybe he'll ask me.
How much I'm gonna answer to that, I'll have to look at that. It would be a dollar. It'll be one comma five zero zero, I mean, zero zero.
Can I have a genite in this?
Yes, it's just.
I would motion to have him assist in the role building administrator inspector, whatever, currently, until you're compensation learned and repeat compensation, we can always validate it when we start those responsibilities.
Okay, second. On there.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number nineteen, it's like we have a plan of second edition here. Just first, this.
Already here.
We're talking about number nineteen, the plan of Isabel second edition.
Okay, yeah.
Where's that, please?
Isabel second edition, went to hall and hall engineering, let's all look back and forth. Between that engineering, Mr. Shane Wicks, I believe all that has been resolved, Mr. Wicks gave us this a thumbs up, and the engineer that submitted this did pay the seventy five dollar final planning fee that the city requires now.
Is there just a sealed dwelling on us, I'm assuming?
Yeah, sealed dwelling.
They're not even building anything, then Shane, what exactly are they doing?
He just based the, if you look on the south part, the lower part, they just basically moved the lot on the west, southwest corner, and they moved it east sixty, east sixty six feet, so the access to the large lots in the north was on the east side, it's on the west side.
So this is on south?
Something, but.
So this is on south here, that's what it's.
Well, this is on the county, it's on the county.
It's on the west side of south.
What is on south, yeah.
So it's in the county, so this is just within our two mile jurisdiction, right, okay. So not within our city, but we have a two mile.
Like a motion except.
Second, roll call please, Tom.
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, item number twenty, discussion of possible motion to appoint Scott Sollner for Fairbanks, hanging dumb.
He has a seat on the fighting and solving, and Mr. Sollner has volunteered to fill that seat. Here tonight. Any questions?
Gonna stand up and wave at you.
Boss watch yourself. No, we need to speed this up.
Good dog, your time is.
Yeah, the email from Mr. Sollner is in our packet. Unless you have any question, then entertain a motion to appoint.
Motion, second.
All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for your volunteers. Okay, moving on to number twenty one. Resolution to amend the hall and hall service agreement. Change both places.
So this is for the, for some change of road intersection project, if you recall, two or three months ago, we were trying to get the right away acquisition easement finalized with the N S S at the corner of Stollman Drive and Los Angeles Highway Road. And there were some issues with that, so we revised it, pursuing the permanent easement and right away acquisition. So it's gonna delay the project. And so we had to redesign some names and solvers. Just some things, we'll just be able to temporarily construction easement. Report that process. So, we did all that, got the plan revised, we got a bid as posed, and then going back after the fact, figured the extra effort into it, and that's what this amended is for.
So. The additional project cost is?
Seventy seven hundred dollars, yeah.
Any questions for Shane on this? If not, consider amending this agreement.
Motion, second.
Roll call please, then.
Aye.
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 Yeah. Number twenty two, resolution to accept the work performed by the High School Company for Fantastic Sewer Re-How. And approve about to change order. And retain each payout.
Yep, so, work is all done, we were just waiting for the final video, they've got that submitted, and if anything was in line, that can come to pay for them. I will pay application, five thousand less than it. Plus on your original contract. I'm not sure if John has all that, he has to step away for a minute, so. But I think, I mean, it's all, there's no change orders or there anything, it's all within the contract price, so.
So.
Second.
Roll call please, Tom.
Aye.
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 Thank you, number twenty three. Resolution to approve the payout number two from Schrader Estimating for the water supply well number four.
Yeah, so, this is a second application for well number four. Really, just includes some of the site work. Schrader Estimating is done, doesn't include any of the observation well or well number four, but everything appears to be in line. Just a couple of updates for the council. They, I see the observation well was drilled, been completed now for a month or more. They did just finish up on Friday, drilling well number four here. You can just see off the highway. The total well depth's about five hundred and twenty seven feet. They installed the casing, if you recall, we did bring on another firm to observe the welding, and they did have ten different well locations. They did have four different areas that they had some defects. Some weldings, well, well, welding inspector appointed out those, we got those prepared before they installed the pipe, so. Those didn't fit there, for the city's costs, but then they went pretty smoothly. They, just a very preliminary number there, just based off of well river, well drillers' observation, they said that they were, they can see it look like maybe about four hundred gallons per minute. So, that's just, you know, high long, a lot of it was thrown out of the well when they were growing, and so, and what's the hope there? Well, the initial study we did with some of the ground penetrating, you know, studies several years ago, they were saying maybe three hundred. And Kevin was saying, well, hopefully we get five hundred. So, kind of right in there, but, you know, we're not done yet, they're gonna do, they still have to do well. They're come down there, inspected, do much thing yet, so. At that point, we'll have a lot better idea of water quality, I mean, a lot of water, but. But, it's better than saying nothing, or, I mean, obviously, everything, you know, there are ways to make up when you're doing well, and there's obviously a lot of them, but. And that was the case with this year, I'm sure Brian can attest, but, but the most part, I think he's done really well.
So this resolution is to approve payout number two for freighter.
Oh, correct. Second.
Roll call please, Ryan. Aye.
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 Point four, there are probably different topics here. Resolution to approve the form of contract for the Hartman Heights Park rest in development project with pink construction. John, you talked about that?
Yeah.
Please.
So this was similar to the sewer extension project, where the competitive quote and how that will process unfolded. We're just gonna bring the formal contract back to you guys, so you can get a chance to look at it before, during the assignment, so, yeah, standard formal contract. You know, start date on there of when school's back in session, two or kids apart. Leashing date next to May, that way in case they don't get any seating done this year, they can come back, touch things up, get seated down next spring. So, any questions?
With basically formalizing.
Yeah. But these competitive quote processes will require these.
Any questions for John? Need a motion, then, please.
Motion. Right on.
Roll call please, Ryan. Aye.
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 Moving on, consider resolution to approve amendment number one to hall and hall professional service agreement. I'll skip on down to, for my part, need some more explanation, John, please.
This is the amendment one? Our amendment, okay. So, this one's kind of been in the works for a while, we're just kind of waiting to see which direction this project went, you know, for construction, so. If you recall, our contract was set up based on putting together an R F P soliciting proposals for design build services. It's a little bit admin, and we found out early on that's a no go, not allowed to do that for design build, but we switched gears, we're designing ourselves. We're gonna keep things moving forward, knock this thing out this year. Put the plans together, obviously additional administrative work. You know, that included some redesign, there's all the last council meeting, one before, where we wanted to flip the bathroom to the other side. Reducing the plans, and what we're gonna flip? Yeah, you can say it. The I mean, obviously, with how everything shook out, competitive quotes, you didn't know quotes, and then negotiating a contract and cost with peak, is extra work involved with that, so. Since we veered away from original scope and took on a lot more of the engineering and responsibility, obviously more cost over here, and so. Yeah, we're, you guys and I originally had a track, it was hourly. And we had included an estimate in there, it was just an hourly of twelve thousand eight hundred, I believe. So, our latest estimate, it's about sixteen to seventeen percent of the construction price, which is standard, that's in line with the design admin and operation contracts that we use again, so.
Okay, could you bring up the exhibit that shows the breakdown and then what the new, I'm sorry. Yeah, now. So, was twelve eight now thirty seven seven? Questions? No? No questions, then? Need a motion to approve this amendment? I thought it went from twelve to twenty four, but it went from thirty seven seven, yes. Thirty seven thousand, true.
I was thinking it was just gonna be minimal amount, but what, what change you said earlier, for you had to be, do a lot of the.
Well, we chose a few times, started off, you know, we had a twenty four by thirty six, but we died with that act twenty four by twenty four. And then, the last meeting, we approved peaks, all that are reduced, we came back and dropped it twenty some thousand. They catch what that is, well, we wanna see the bathroom flipped. Well, trick with that is, we're redesigning what we've already accepted a price for peaks, now we gotta try to keep all these quantities of the work and their scope the same, so they can honor that price you just accepted, so. Flipping things around, I mean, even your correct balance, then the pavement areas, sewer water service, such as the building, and try to maintain our whole scope and their reduced price that you accepted, it's a little work over that.
So we save twenty and then spend twenty four on engineering, so.
I mean, like I said, it's sixteen to seventeen percent of the construction cost, so. If you want to hire an architect from the beginning, it would have been more expensive than this, so.
It's for bathrooms.
So once again, bathrooms cost us money.
We could have just had a porta potty up there for two hundred dollars, come on.
For two hundred forty one years.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, this is.
Two hundred forty one.
This is why you don't get bathrooms, Joe. Just not gonna lie.
Well, it's hard to be just saying all the cost, but I'm the one that was saying, for sure, like eight hundred times, and then meeting, so.
This is what it is, we will get right now.
Right.
Team, I guess. Hard from experience, I guess, but I know how about, Joe.
It was still under. I mean, we, when we looked at, pretty sad, bathrooms are wrong tech and everything else, there are cash oriented, your fees are included in that package. And it's, we're still well under that cost, and we wear our eyebrows, so.
Any more questions, council? Need a motion to approve amendment number one?
Motion. Second.
Roll call please, Ryan.
Aye.
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 Very hand, there's only one more bathroom, I think.
But on a fifteen year. But if you know what a split trench is? We'll talk about that later.
We're gonna get you two porta potties in one part. To maximize. Oh, my word. And it was a quarter, quarter bodies that we can just come through. Bye. Okay, move on, council, numbers twenty six, discussion of possible motion about sitting hall popcorn. That's right in the chair, you join. The bad port there.
Twenty four, I was mentioning.
Okay, so, software. We have G works, we've had G work since, at least for the utility building before, since before I came. In February of eleven, we went with general ledger payroll, A P. You know, everything that we do is with G works. We know how to use it, runs good. Their company has redesigned their software. Made it cloud based, and made it not work. And every city who's on the cloud active is screaming. I mean, cash balance is not working, reports they can't print. Long Grove said about their website, how it lists things that's got from where they went live with it, and then the current stuff's clear in the bottom. It's horrible. So they pushed us to sign. So they pushed us to sign a contract to convert to their cloud, and I said, no, 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 no. It's until it's working. Kept trying to hear they had it working. The, uh, E P that was in charge of the project is gone from the company, they have a new C E O. You know, that's trying to reassure everybody they're gonna get things working. Um, yeah, just within the last month, he said, you know, we said everybody had to sign by the end of this year, um, and then we wouldn't transition you until twenty-six. And we're probably gonna move that deadline, I would think so, because people are leaving like bikes out of a burning house. So, um, we have been looking and, uh, listening to other cities that have chosen software and, uh, and I have used footbooks, that's not powerful enough for us, I've used Vannion, I would never recommend it. So it got down to Edmonds, and Stacy, Tina, Tina and I did a, uh, demonstration. Saw some of the screens, talked to them, um, and so their timeline is, at the longest, sixteen months to convert. Oh, here's another fun fact. So G-Works, who we have now, and all our data's in there, they won't convert any of the old data. So we would have to hand-enter every address, every customer, every A P vendor, every meter number, everything. Edmonds.
To go to cloud-based?
Yeah. To go to the same company shop. So, yeah. Um, Edmonds will extract it. Um, so sixteen months of the quantity, so if we sign now will be converted sometime before the end of twenty-six. Um, which means that in December of twenty-five, we'll have to pay for G-Works for this, for the calendar year of twenty-six. So we'll have, we'll have to pay now to sign with Edmonds, and so we're gonna have double software cost um, in this fiscal year. I recommend you would go with Edmonds, um, and I think it makes sense to use local option sales tax money for this unexpected extra cost, I mean, I could divide it out between all of our departments. But it really is an unrealistic double fee. Um, and that's, I guess, it, any questions?
Edmonds been around a long time.
Yes.
You contact another municipalities that use it?
Yes. And Iowa municipalities that are in the process of transition.
Ask them how that conversion went for them.
Well, uh, the Iowa ones are still in the, uh, oh, I should have brought that name up. The city by, uh, by Waterloo that's really close to go live, uh, but, uh, they're in, uh,
Denver.
Like, uh, thirty-five states. You know, they're a nation, a nationwide company that's been in business since seventies. So uh, there is a, a Tyler technology that I didn't really look into, it's more powerful, bigger cities have it, it's more expensive. Um, and then kind of a comparable that I looked at did not have some of the, um, options that we need. Another reason with G-Works, so we have about seven hundred fifty utility customers on A C H comes out automatically. Our bank charges us twenty-five dollars a month for all of our A C H files, the utility billing and the weekly payroll of our. On the cloud, G-Works is going to charge about two dollars, a little under two to every customer that's on A C H every month for the privilege to do it. You know, that's twenty-four dollars a year for every seven hundred fifty A C H customers that doesn't make sense to me, Edmonds doesn't have that. We generate the A C H file through the software, we can send it to our factory site.
Where's the double up and up then, the crossover though?
Well, I don't have the bill from G-Works, um, and last year it was like twenty-five thousand, and it was just like in mid-November, they sent us the bill, assuming into December, they hadn't told anybody that there was a um, double price, um, increase. So I'm assuming it's still in that range, but I can't guarantee it, they don't share information until, right? And the Ed, Edmonds to sign with them right now, and responding to these attachments, and not finding that style competent. Part of that was something.
Is, is Edmonds cloud-based, or are you hosting on your terrace?
Uh, we is pissed, and, uh, it doesn't cost any different to go with whichever we want, and it operates exactly the same on both platforms. I would recommend that we go with the server base, not the cloud base, get the internets down, we're all shut down. Um, and he said, if you decide next year to go to the cloud, it's very, very there's no cost difference, and it's a very. Uh, G-Works, their cloud base is completely different than what we're using now, all the screens would be different, so regardless of where we go, we're learning new software. But this one, we're not paying for convert, uh, but they're gonna extract the files, we're not hand-entering everything, we don't have the A C H. Um, every month fee, and it works, which is my biggest sell. Again, any questions for Cynthia?
Well, I read it as the yearly fees, twelve green. That correct, because we had the upfront implementation costs. But the yearly fee is essentially half.
Is less, yeah, yes.
G-Works bill, um, for this. And as she said, it works, and I remember from the very beginning, like we talked about how long they're gonna support, not cloud-based, but how much of the Charlie Fox trial, and so, and I see what they do with quick quotes open the shop, how they want to hook people through a plain glass window with numbers going add up, so I don't blame them for wanting some, they can work. I'd say motion for moving forward with, um, Edmonds.
And can we, uh, amend the loss budget to pay for that, so doesn't hit everybody's budget twice, someone?
I was gonna use loss for bathroom, but I guess.
There's probably still not.
No, they're gonna find you.
Some motion second, you all in favor, please?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. All right, number twenty-seven, it's, uh, it's simply setting, uh, public hearing date on the renewal and amendment, and this, uh, you've got the amendment in front of you, so you know in advance what that's going to be. But tonight, we're just setting the public hearing date, so that would be your next upcoming of September ninth. Done with.
Second.
Roll call please, Tom.
Aye, aye. And this will be on the P and T agenda next week.
Okay. I have number twenty-eight, uh, resolution for the annual appropriation for debt. This is actually the very first step that you take for the next budget that you're gonna work on in the spring, so this is the, um, annual appropriation bond that you have. And every year, the council has to take action to say, yep, we'll pay the payment next fiscal year, and so that's what you're doing. Yeah, they go in there and implement, so it's. Did you say, yeah, she said, I, I'll think I heard. So.
Second.
Roll call please, Tom.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, twenty-nine, consider us wishing for transfers.
I would have put this on the ladder remember, so.
Yeah, so this is for the, uh, twenty twenty-four G O bond money, to just to shift it around in the, um, so the, uh, Williams Boulevard, um, extension, it put some money in there, but we're gonna need more money, the well recap, um, it needed some extra money, and then, uh, there was money left over in the debt service fund, um, not allocated, so move that to the intersection project, that's all that is. Any questions for Cynthia on these transfers? Yes, ma'am, you can roll some.
Okay, so.
Roll call please, Mary.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, moving on to the plans list, anyone have any questions on the plans?
I do. Professional plumbing has parts for twenty-three hundred dollars, it's actually a library bill.
Okay.
Parts.
All right, this is the description, needs to be changed.
I was worried, that was right.
It's actually two thousand one hundred seventeen dollars. I've got the, um, deal here, there is a, uh, P Oracle's with it too, I'll just turn it this way, all right?
So side duty is the auditor of our dome?
Well, auditor of. I get taken advantage of by Atlanta, Doc.
And any other questions on the plans list? Very none, if there are also some data.
I'll move second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on, activities for, uh, this is on the agenda. Oh, wait, there, that wants to speak, yes. Thank you, we'll move on, uh, prayers, comment, uh, thank you, counsel, and again, congratulations to the presentation of new Auburn facility. Thank you, any additional comments? Uh, we're going to, uh, press my, I'll sit down and, uh, I think, I think it's back to Wednesday, I believe, I don't know if you've had a chance to consider, is it gonna go Thursday or not? So one, either he or I or a combination will go and join, it's also fine, that's in September. So they get the conference in Des Moines.
I'll have to compare, try to compare. Oh, just begin fine.
No, no. Oh, boom. Motion to adjourn, please. Thank you, the second. Motion to adjourn.
Second, aye, sorry.
All in favor? Thank you, counsel. We'll jump on that, I'll do this.
Yeah, just right here.